Okay, Rich, you're ready to go.
Great, thank you, Steve. Hello, everybody. It is Wednesday twenty-third of September twenty twenty-five, and this is a special meeting of the Water Valley Select Board. I am Rich Reed of the Chair, and with me here today is Wendy Rapp, the Vice Chair, and Dan Bancroft, Select Board Member. So we have a quorum. The purpose of this meeting, it's actually the sole purpose, is to continue our discussion on hiring a new town manager. But if anyone's here for something else, we can entertain it now. If not, just going to move forward. We have our regular Select Board meeting at three o'clock tomorrow as well. Quite a full agenda, but you're welcome to come to that as well. We always say tongue-in-cheek like participation, attendance, but that usually means we've done something wrong. But maybe not in this case. I wouldn't like to say at the outset that, of course, you're welcome here today. It's your right to be here. You're welcome to listen to everything you say, but the board is not expecting to take any comments from the floor. This is a board discussion about the job application that we're hopefully going to finalize today. And also, we want to straighten out the process that we're going to use going forward to select a new town manager. So you get to see the board and all its glorious discussion status, I guess. Yeah, hopefully not too much. So with all that said, I think we have several several drafts that have been going around that we've resisted commenting on because we're not supposed to per state law. So I'm open to suggestions of how anyone would like to proceed. I think we have one draft that Dan and Steve worked on, which was sort of the basic draft, the start of all this. And then Wendy provided language to supplement that, and I did as well. So
I think to clarify, I wasn't necessarily looking to supplement, but to go in a different direction.
Right. I think I as I was as well, to be to be frank on it, yes. So there we are. Perhaps we want to look at the overall point, I think, that Wendy and I were driving toward, with something much more specific. As I think you guys can see from from my comments and Wendy Wendy's comments, talking to Steve and and Dan, we tend to be much more specific in what we want to see in this ad. So let me open it up to you guys, see if anything you'd like to say, or Wendy, if you'd like to introduce.
No, I just apologize. I was running from another meeting to this. So I've just finished quickly reading through your verbiage, Rich, and I think that's all very valid points, you know, identifying the size of the Select Board, the size of the town, both in people, sorry, the town staff, both in people, as well as budgets are all really really important things to add as well. And as far as the three eighty-two town landfill, then there was well, I think that was the only other thing that I hadn't mentioned, Jenny.
Right. Yeah, I think it was going the lines you were going. One thing I didn't add, and I wanted to talk through a little bit, is I think we also should say something to the effect that we have a very active and engaged town residents
Yes.
on municipal matters.
Yes.
I think to give any anyone who wants to apply fair warning, I think we should mention that as well. Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Are we trying to scare away the applicants?
No, we need to make sure that we have a qualify.
No, I'm just
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, it's kind of that's kind of the balance, I think, we're trying to work for here. The 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 problem is, I think, my major concern is that if we have a more general, we may get someone who thinks this is a small town, who's looking to coast five or six years at the end, you know, at the end of a at the end of a career. I think we need someone who's hungry on the way up, who's got some deal with some major projects.
Would you mind if I took a moment just to help frame things for everybody here?
Sure.
So we started out with a notional job ad that we based off of one that for another town that we saw. And it highlighted a few things. There's a paragraph about the town. In our case, you know, we have this beautiful, wonderful place that we live. And there was a general paragraph on responsibilities for a town manager, and ours are very similar in in many respects. However, we have a lot going on here that exceeds what might be in just a, let's say, a regular old town manager for some tired old town, if you will. And so Wendy and Rich, in particular, both wanted to take the words that Steve and I put together, which sounded very good on a word, you know, it was nice poetry, if you will, and tighten it up. And add statements in effect that we have a large wastewater treatment plant project coming along that the candidate needs to be able to interact with, you know, Department of Environmental Services, the Forest Service, and all of these other different organizations as part of their duties and so forth. And, you know, what we have in front of us here, some messages where we've been exchanging at least high-level thoughts on what we should put into this. Wendy took Steve's draft and then gave us a different direction. And then we had, I think, a third draft the other day that I thought was sort of missing it pretty close. So what we're trying to do is to get appropriate wording. We want to get somebody in here like Rich says, who isn't in the twilight of their career, thinking that, oh, I'm going to come to the sleepy old town and be here a couple of years and then retire. We're really looking for a longer-term solution to fulfill the town's needs. Is that a fair way to put at least that part of it? So Rich, this morning has sent us some messages or a message.
And I think the biggest, if I could interject, the biggest challenge that we have is we're not supposed to have, you know, one loss of communication by email, not in front of the public. So this is us like each throwing out versions of the ad and coming together and trying to
Right.
piece it together.
So so we're meeting here in public today. This is a good thing. We have some so Rich has suggested some very specific language this morning that includes, you know, real numbers. This is what our budget is. This is the size of our town. These are the core elements of the town that we have. And you know, as I look at this right now, I don't have a problem with this, other than to say that you know, budgets change, maybe it goes up, maybe it goes down, probably things end up going up over time. It includes things like, you know, if you will, a description of our town organization. So we have a public safety, you know, Department of Public Works, administrative group, and so forth. So I'm not actually against any of the wording that he's put forth here. He talks with respect to having good relations and working closely with key non-town actors. And then he also talks about working together with the resort folks, the Tyrell Group and such, on their future development needs.
And I think I had touched on those two points in my iteration as well, and listen, engage, and form relationships with state leaders in town. And additionally, there's potential for commercial commercial development in the few remaining undeveloped areas in town, and the ability to work with a planning board will be important. So I think it's a matter of just how deeply we want to dive into each of these.
And I was working off of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm and I'm fine with all of these suggestions. The only comment I have is that this seems rather verbose for an ad.
Well, that's one of the issues I had.
When we couple it with all of the other verbiage that we have. And so then the question is, is in my mind, at least, is how do we or is there even a way to more succinctly summarize this so that we reduce the overall length of the ad? If somebody gets a five-page ad, obviously, and I don't think that's the intent.
No, I think it was just throw out some some language to incorporate into it. The one area that I felt deficient in is writing a job application. I haven't done anything like that for fifteen years, and it was more government-oriented, not
Right.
not for this type of things. I wanted to check. Yeah, I wanted to check with Steve, who's written a lot of these for the town, especially over the, well, your four years here as to what the state, what it looks like now, and whether we're going in a right direction in a non-verbal manner. I mean, I imagine we're looking at a page, maybe two.
Well, I think one, I looked at the NHMA ads, and I didn't see any that were beyond a page.
Right.
And I'm wondering also, a lot of
That makes sense to me, like a resume.
Right, a lot of the details that are in here are also in our annual report, right?
Right.
That should be easily accessible online.
We could cite that.
Right, by someone who, when we're looking for someone who's qualified enough to theoretically know to look for an annual report to find out more about the town.
Mm-hmm. I think the larger point I was trying to make was simply that we're not a typical north-central town and with with and most of the towns up here and north of us do not have a water department, a wastewater facility, a municipal solid waste operation and a fully staffed Department of Public Safety with firefighters and an ambulance.
Perhaps there could be
We're very different.
Yeah, perhaps there could be a paragraph added to, yeah, summarize a different department.
Right. Well, that's what I was trying to do, and the importance of the recreation department, too, I think, as a resort town.
So I believe that we do need a statement with respect to the New Hampshire RSAs regarding, you know, the municipal aspects. Because if our ad goes out, for instance, I think we were talking about Indeed. Is that correct, Steve?
That's the platform we're using.
Yeah, so we may get applications from out of state. And one of the things that's going to be critical in my mind is that any of the candidates need to be certainly cognizant and fluent on New Hampshire law.
Well, that's why that's one of the aspects that, you know, we made sure to highlight. And I think every iteration has something pertaining to that.
I think we stated explicitly.
Yeah.
Because New Hampshire law governs a lot of what we do. And certainly, it governs the town manager position.
Of course.
So.
Yeah. I guess I'm assuming we're looking for someone who would know that already.
Oh, they might not, to be honest with you.
We want experience with New Hampshire's municipal landscape, or something
I mean
lines, municipal municipal regulations.
Yeah, state law with regard to
Yeah, I would say something akin to state law with respect to municipalities.
See if they do the research. I mean, that could be an important part of when we get to process. To see if someone does take the time to come here with
They might assume they know everything based on their own state. For instance, if we get somebody from Vermont or Massachusetts or whatever.
May I ask you a question?
Sure, Joan.
Look in to see if there are employment agencies that specialize in municipal placements, and they could very well help you with these issues that you're having.
Like a headhunter type of thing?
We've
I would think that would be a beneficial way to go, not just in establishing the the at the nation, you know, and
Right.
but also in the in the selection process.
Right, we have talked about that, including with Town Council. I believe the preeminent one in state is is it MRI, if I'm remembering correctly? And we're that's sort of a last resort that we're looking at because of the expense involved.
I think it was in the MRI to help us have an interim.
We could get an interim, but I think they're also
Oh, are they more
I think that they do headhunting, right?
They do.
That and I remember I think I've said before, Mark thought very highly of them, but said, we'll we'll pay an arm and a leg if we go that route.
Right.
When we're talking about hiring people or getting an interim, anything, you know, it's substituted temporary. So thanks, Joan. We have looked at it, and we decided maybe to strike out on our own.
Sometimes it's short money.
It could be. It could be. Yeah.
You get somebody that's going to last twenty years, it's
Yes, no, and we may it may be worth the the cost. I think we felt that we can come up with a a job a job advertisement between Steve's experience in doing these over the years and our desire to see the words that we want, that we can come up with something that would fit fit the bill.
One thing, too, Wendy, just to keep in mind, on NHMA, what I've seen a lot with town manager job adverts is they'll have a pretty concise and clear description on the ad that's listed on NHMA.
Yep.
But it'll link to something that might be a little more stylistic and creative on the town's website, like a more detailed either job description or a more colored job advertisement that lives as an attachment on the on the town's website. So
Okay.
we don't necessarily have to be restricted by length. If we want to just put something that's more clear, concise on that front page
And have that link.
and link back to something.
Yeah, yeah, just basically. That's that sounds like a good path. I mean, I think it I think we're at the point, at least with regard to the job advertisement. I think we're in general agreement. We just we want to see something
Yes.
specific, but not very not verbose.
Right.
I see Cindy. Can't help yourself, can you, Cindy? Yes, ma'am. What do you got?
Have you decided to go back and look at when Mark was applying? When you were looking for Mark's position, to look at that old ad, to just go as a as a basis?
I have not. Have either of you looked at it? It's probably something we could do.
I don't even know if it still exists.
It must be.
A long time ago.
It may be, and it may be in some of Mark's official official records, stuff that he kept that were town-oriented in his office. There may be something online. We can look at that. Thank you. But I think we have enough in front of us. I mean, I think it's just a matter of someone sitting down and putting it all together.
Yep.
And the rest of us looking at it quickly.
Yes.
And just getting it out. I think I think that's the other part of this. We want it to be quick.
Yes.
We need we'd like to get it out as quickly as possible.
Yes.
We want to get the ad out quickly. We want to be careful with who we hire.
Of course.
Yeah.
So how would you like to proceed then? On one of us want to take on the mantle, or Dan, do you still want to continue to pull things together with Steve? I'm quick. I think we're talking about getting something finalized in time for our meeting Wednes- well, Wednesday is tomorrow, so that we can vote on it and get it out.
Yes.
I want your thoughts, Steve. What's your timetable?
I'm available this afternoon, Dan.
I am, too. I don't have a schedule anymore.
We'll stick another crack at it and whip it up.
And we will
To send the draft out.
Incorporate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Narrow down whatever you think.
We might narrow down a few statements, just
As I said, this would do some ideas and thoughts and make it fit.
No, and I I think they're good ideas. It's not, in general, we all have ideas. There are three of us, right? And they're all a little bit different. But we all have good ideas. And it's really just a matter of melding our thoughts together to get down to something a little more concise while achieving the desired.
Okay.
And I would think as far as stylistically, we're probably looking for something without the banners and pictures and
Yeah, I was that current. I mean, it seems kind of, I don't know, it didn't seem, you know, the picture at the front and the large, large font. I'm just used to something, again, I could be way out of date and in the wrong field. That's very to the point.
Yeah, I just thought it graphically, it might be appealing to some people that have a little more
I think a town logo at the top is okay.
Yeah.
I think we should omit the picture that we had in there because you sort of your eyes are drawn more to a picture, which is a nice picture of a bunch of people enjoying life. But really, this is kind of a serious matter. And so it really matters with the words that we get to the paper.
That's fine.
So
Once we've gotten applicants, will you be getting a selection committee?
Well, that's our next agenda item is to go over the process. Yeah. We just wanted to get this out of the way so we can vote on it tomorrow and get it out there so that we start getting names, hopefully.
Very good.
We can figure out the process. All right. So we think we're good on on this?
I think so.
Yeah, right. So something get something to us by our three o'clock meeting tomorrow.
So less of the descriptive of town and more of the descriptive of the job.
Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Cool.
Yeah. Do we want to say anything? The other two, I mentioned one of the two points was note the active and engaged residents in town.
Yes, absolutely.
That's an important part of the job
Yeah.
for town managers to interact with residents.
Yeah.
So it would be something, a sentence like
I mean, I think I did have that note, but communicate clearly and effectively with members of the community.
There you go. Well, I wanted to give them fair warning about an active and engaged.
Members active with members of this active
Yeah, that's
actively community.
That that work. Sure, sure.
Are you giving notice that of the the project by the, you know, the gondola thing?
Well, in the in the language I put together, I did mention that the project, the conceptual project, and and mentioned some of the big commercial developments like condominium, the gondola, two new hotels. I did mention that. But we'll have to see. I let Dan and Dan and Steve work on it. We've got to narrow it down a bit, things like that. I like the idea of linkage.
Yeah, I I think so, too. Like, mine was much more vague, because I just mentioned there's a potential for commercial development in the few remaining undeveloped areas of town.
That's that's different than dealing with the feds.
Well, we mentioned that as well.
Oh, that's in a different part, too.
Yeah, we mentioned that.
That's a whole different thing.
No, yes.
And we do have some language in here on that, on the importance of dealing with the Forest Service and New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, two key.
And EPA.
Oh, EPA, forgot the EPA. Yeah, unfortunately, EPA.
We mentioned, too, that our previous town manager was here for twenty-four years, and that is something that we would like to review for possible.
Okay, we can think about that. Yeah, we can see what you see. Why don't you guys see if that can fit in there? The other thing is how specific you wanted to be in the language on the compensation. I think you just had the compensation will be that standard language.
That's pretty standard language, what we had in there.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Yeah, if you
I think another, I'm saying, there's two things here. You want an administrator and and a project manager. You want two disciplines.
Well, the project manager will be a different position, though.
Yeah. I think that'll come out. The way we looked at that, Ray, is that that would come out of the discussion of anybody we talked to about the getting a project manager specifically for the wastewater treatment facility, but also for other major projects. It's the way we've done it in the past.
Yeah, the town manager, the town manager is not going to be the project manager. That will be a different. They will need to liaise and communicate, of course, but they're not going to be the same position.
In fact, that's on our agenda tomorrow, I think, is to move forward with the project manager for the wastewater treatment facility. Thank you. Okay. Why don't we move on? If you guys are good to go, why don't we move on to the process question we have in front of us? So we haven't really engaged on this yet at all. We've just said we got to get to it. I'll open it up to Wendy and and you, Dan, first, see what your ideas are. I have a specific idea, but I'll let you guys go first.
I mean, I I think it's a matter of balancing, as I've said already, moving as quickly as expeditiously as possible and carefully with also getting support from folks in town who have experience in this type of thing. I mean, you're on this board with the with the most longevity. I've not quite completed a full term, and Dan, you're pretty darn new. So I think having experience other people's input who have the experience on this board for longer-term periods of time would be really helpful.
I was thinking that we should find a way to rope in the four, I think it is, living ex-select board members in this process. There's decades of experience in all of that. See if any of them are interested. But I guess the way I looked at it, let let I mean, take back what I said and just put out what I was thinking, then then Dan and Wendy can react. I think we need a two-step process. I think we get the job ad out. We get responses. Then we have a small group, maybe five people, three or four ex-select board members, one or two staff members. Keep it to five. And let those people do the initial review of the applications, the winnowing out, and bring to the full board, the full select board, who it is that they think we ought to give a hard look at, that to be within interview. So that would be the second step. I mean, that's the sort of process I was looking at.
Sounds reasonable. What do you think, Dan?
Right. It should be understood by everyone that the responsibility for hiring the town manager rests with the Select Board, though. So ultimately, regardless of any recommendations and so forth from a town committee or any other group, it's our decision and by law. And we have been entrusted as select board members to perform that function. And so I want to, while I'm not adverse at all to having outside input from individuals such as Rich mentioned, it should be understood by everyone that this responsibility lies with us. And so ultimately, there will be a decision that is made regarding who we hire.
Yeah, the contract with the Select Board.
People will like that decision inherently, and other people will inherently not like that decision. And I just want to make everyone aware that you know, certainly, that's a thing. We're trying to move forward as we can in the best interest of the community. So that's really why we are here, sitting up here today, is we are working on behalf of the community, and we're trying, and we will do our best to hire the correct person.
So it's our decision. We checked with Town Council, so
Yeah, it is.
We decide, and it's why we get the big bucks, I suppose.
Oh, yeah.
And
Negative thirty-three cents a year?
Whatever, whatever it may be. So anyway, to 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 discuss the process, I think the first thing is, are either of you, both of you amenable to this two-step process I outlined as a way to bring someone in front of the Select Board, or some ones, it could be two or three. I think the job ad we were looking at, like October fifteenth, I think, was the original. I don't know if we're going to still stick to that date in the application, but
It'd be nice to try, because in my mind, a lot of contracts run annually, right, calendar year?
Right.
So I would hope we need to act, I would think we need to act quickly to capture any potential candidates before they make other
Right.
commitments.
Sure.
I will say that I believe pre-camp dates mind like for a job of
In the past, that we, the selection committee has brought to the Select Board, like a list of two or three and and total pluses and minuses, and rank order them before we've acted. That's kind of the process I I think we will follow.
But I'm not looking for any committee to provide me with some final choice based on their decisions.
No, that's not, that's not the intent.
This, you know, we need to variety of people to look at, if you will.
Okay.
Because everybody has personal biases towards candidates and so forth.
I would I would weigh heavily, but folks like, if they're interested in participating, Joan, Margaret, Mike, and Bob would have, given, as I said, the decades of experience over time. I don't mean to date anybody, but I'll sound back to you, Joe, on the Select Board. Oh, we're not going to mention that. But I mean, I think they've seen everything there is to see, I think.
Yeah.
And as you pointed out, I have the longest longevity, sorry about that, here, but that isn't really very much. I mean, I think of my ace year, so it's not a lot. But others have had, have seen stuff, including when we But others have had, have seen stuff, including when we hired, uh, Mark, you go back a long way. Uh, there are issues that came up that haven't come up since I've been on the board, so. Right, no, I don't think we're looking at, I mean, I think we can agree that this committee of experts, whatever you want to call it, that we, um, uh, form, that we can rope into this with us. Their job is to winnow it out for us and provide us with, uh, candidates they think would be suitable for us to interview inadequate and better than adequate, not that they would make the decision for us. And I, I think I could trust those folks to.
Oh, absolutely.
To do it that way. To me, it's a matter of uh, seeing if we can get those folks and I think it's important to have a town, well, at least one town staff. I think Steve, it wouldn't be you because I think you should be above it and off to the side. Maybe one of the other department heads would be a good choice. But I think you as the assistant manager and interim town manager maybe should be part of that group and not part of like the five. You're just like off over here, maybe as the secretary slash advisor, uh, observer of what's going on. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to participate however many of you guys would like it. I'd be happy to do reference checks if you'd like me to take on that responsibility or.
Yeah, all of that.
And a pre-screening, I'd be happy to have the candidate applications flow through me and, um, then make recommendations on who we bring forth for our initial, initial interview.
Yeah.
I believe by statute the town manager while the role you're describing is certainly acceptable is not involved in the direct interviewing or hiring of the candidates.
Right. Right, no. And Steve is acting as the interviewer.
They do that so that.
You don't get undue influence.
It's understood, yes.
Yeah, you don't get undue influence, someone trying to bring in somebody to replace them. And so forth. Um, there is the unresolved, we didn't actually touch upon it on, in our job application, but there's also the question of tax collector.
Yes.
Not sure how we want to handle that yet. I think, uh, Steve, what's the, I'm sorry, I just want to ask Steve what the baseline is now on that, because I know you've done some work looking into that for us.
Yep, so our auditing firm is in the process of doing a, it's like a closeout audit, so when you have a tax collector move out of their position, the books need to be audited and a report needs to be produced for DRA. So he's doing that now. As soon as that report's produced and submitted to DRA, we can then appoint an interim tax collector. And the recommendation from DRA, our auditor, myself, would be to appoint Kristen, as she's the deputy, as the tax collector. And then there's a finite period of time that she can act in that.
Capacity.
What, what is that period of time?
I think it's thirty days.
Oh.
So I have an email out to town council Joe to see what our options are.
Because we can't separate that role from the town manager role without town meeting vote.
Correct.
So we need that extra time.
Yeah.
Right, we need to find out from town council. Plus, we're coming up on.
We can't do that at special meeting either.
Property tax bill.
We have a special town meeting, we can't change that in a special town meeting.
Um, I'm not.
We can't.
It does, it was too.
Yeah, the law doesn't allow.
It requires a regular town meeting for that, okay.
Requires regular town.
And because it probably involves money, I guess that's the way that maybe they look at it, yeah.
Isn't that an elected position?
It is, it can be, but the town voted years ago, uh, and it's a town meeting vote to, uh, give that job to the, uh, town manager.
You, you can combine them.
So that's what we've done. So we'd have to go to town meeting and change that if we wanted to. It used to be elected, I believe, here in Waterville Valley.
Yeah, I, I suppose unless we find a candidate who's really enthusiastic to have both positions.
Right. But we have other options. First, we got to go get over this thirty-day hump. We got to figure out
Yeah.
how we get beyond that and then decide whether we want, uh, the assistant town manager to be the the, uh, tax collector and Kristen staying the deputy or, or, or vice versa, or do we want the new town manager to retain that?
We have to have the interim town manager be the tax collector since that's how the town had it set up.
I think we have to do it that way until, until we, if, if we were to make a change to the town manager, then yes, it would have to be, uh, a town meeting vote. So the expectation of someone coming in.
The interim town manager would need to do both jobs until we can get to the vote.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Correct. Unless we hire somebody, we will, we will, we may not need the vote, right? We hire somebody.
No, we need the vote if we're going to separate it.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, if you don't separate it, if, if we hire somebody.
Yes, yes, yes.
Then we don't have to make any changes.
Exactly.
And that's something we have to, we actually didn't, uh,
Address, yeah.
Didn't address, uh,
Good point.
But we're still kind of in limbo here, it's hard for us to address it. I think we can still go out with our ad, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and talk and mention that, that there's, that the previous town manager was a tax collector by town vote. I think we want to keep it that way, but I don't, we, it doesn't have to be written in stone, right?
I don't know, we, I don't think we've had time to really discuss that.
Well, it has to be.
Well, in previous discussions with Mark, he had indicated that it was very rare to have the combined positions, that he was one of only a very few in this state.
That's right.
And then it would be easier to fill, fill the town manager position if it was separated. Now perhaps there's someone again who has that ambition and that expertise to be able to do both and that would.
The bind will be in is that we cannot change it until town meeting, so anyone who takes the job, if they take it before town meeting, it would have to be with the expectation of being the tax collector because town may decide not to change it. Right? The vote may not go in favor of changing that.
All kinds of good questions for council.
Yes, so we need to iron that out.
Yeah, the inquiry went out on Friday, awaiting his response.
Okay.
All, all of what you just discussed is what I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, we probably need to have some answers, if not all the answers, early suggestions soon, so that when people start applying. Um, but I do wonder, um, now we should probably leave it out of the job advertisement at this point, it's a big part of the job.
Tax then.
Well, we're getting, right, right, those, those bills start going out in early November at the latest, right? A month before is required.
Correct.
So we're a little over a month out of, right?
Yeah.
Seven week, no, not even, no, five weeks?
Yeah, mid to late October is when I like to get them.
Yeah, alright, so three, four weeks.
Yeah.
Three, four weeks out. Okay, but Kristen can handle that for now. When's it, wait, because we haven't, the, the thirty-day clock hasn't started, right?
I want to make sure that the thirty-day clock starts once that audit is submitted to DRA and not at the time of the tax collector's departure.
Right.
Because if it's at the.
Oh, then we're really in hot water. Well, then we really need council to advise us.
There has to be some workaround. I mean, that we can't be the first town going through this, so.
No, no, losing a town manager, thirty days seems awful short to, I mean, uh, a tax collector seems awfully short to come up with somebody.
Yeah.
And what, what does the town do if it's an elected position?
No, exactly.
Do you have an election right away? I don't know.
Town meeting, I believe, that's the guidance that Kristen received from.
I see.
Um, I forget the gentleman's name, but with DRA, she was at conference last week and she did ask about the special meeting and he said that that is something he thought we could, we could do to, to change that, yeah.
Say that again?
Can't separate the positions once they've been combined through a special town meeting. It actually has to be through a normal town meeting.
It's pretty.
Were they not combined?
Yeah.
It might be a different scenario where we could hold a special election in town just for the purpose of selecting a new tax collector.
Yeah, probably ninety-nine point nine percent correct, but let's just see what town council.
Oh, yeah.
See if, see if our legal advisor had come out with, come up with a workaround for.
Yeah, there has to be some sort of a.
If not, if not, then not, then we know that's the baseline, that we know where we're moving from. If so, then maybe we'll consider going down that path. Alright, so are we good on the process then? Are we good on the ad?
Yeah.
Any other? Anything else?
I'm good on that.
So, um, I can contact the, yep, go ahead, Steve.
One other piece, Rich, that I'm.
Yeah, please.
Hoping that we can get some feedback on is the two job descriptions that I provided, the existing job description.
Of the town manager, right.
That I came up with, at least. I'd like to have something that we feel comfortable with for the interview.
Yeah, oh, were we thinking of, uh, attaching or linking the, the, uh, position description?
Ideally.
I think you'd have to do that. It said right at the very top, tax collector.
On the existing.
On the existing, maybe we have to put tax collector in the advertisement as well. The position description.
There are two, there are two, and there's town manager and there's town manager tax collector.
Oh, okay.
Right, the town manager is amended two thousand five, which is the one you, uh, and you have the town manager duties. A draft, this is the one that you've, that you've drafted.
Yeah.
Alright. Do you want to see if we can look at this by tomorrow? I mean, so that we can make sure we get the position description out, that's simply our decision, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
They're very similar, I can make a lot of changes, but.
Right. Yeah, why don't you, why don't you and Dan concentrate on the ad and Dan, of course, look at the town man, look at Steve's draft and the town manager. Wendy and I will as well, and then we'll incorporate, I think we already have an agenda item. You know, update on, on the, all of this, so we can fold our discussion of the position description into that meeting tomorrow. Alright. So, um, I can certainly reach out to the former select board members and see who, if any, would like to participate, help us, help the town.
Someone snuck out of here, didn't they?
Yeah, she, very quietly too, so. Um, and then they can organize themselves, I think, and then Steve, we can, um,
With Steve?
Yeah, I would say Steve could work with.
Oh, we didn't decide who would be the other department head?
Well, I think, uh, we have two who've been here a long time.
Right.
Uh, given their other duties, uh, Dave or, or Brooke would be the, would be the two I, uh, we would choose from, one of the two I think would be better. We could do all two, I mean, it depends how many of the select board former select board folks want to participate. I mean, I like to keep it to five people, make it workable.
Think it should be any larger than five.
No, yeah, I think we agree with that.
Yeah, I think.
Uh, we could check with Dave and Brooke and see either one of them are interested in participating in this and then we could, just like with the select board members, comma X, comma, we could we could then see who we have with the numbers that we have. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, I think Dave's plate's been pretty full, I mean, we might want to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think he's.
First and see.
Yeah.
That's just my thought.
Well, Dave, I think he's been here the longest, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, so he, it might be something he, he would be interested in, so I would just like to give him maybe first right of refusal and then see if Brooke is interested.
Sure.
But let's see if both of them are maybe interested in that. Okay. Alright. I think we have a path forward. I will contact the other select board members.
Great.
Uh, Steve, will you check with Dave and Brooke to see if either one or both are interested? Alright, and, uh, contrary to my opening statement, does anybody here want to add anything? Tell them we're going in the wrong direction?
I just have a question.
Sure thing. You can always ask us a question.
The state has a lot of assistance with men available for managing issues within the town, i.e. um, there's training for library trustees, there's training for town clerk.
Training for select board members, yeah.
Yeah?
Is, that's my question, is there a, a training for select board, is there a training for town managers kind of thing? Is there anybody at the state who can help you guide through what the legal?
Well, we've talked to town council extensively.
NHMA is also another good resource, we've been reaching, a New Hampshire Municipal Association, we've been reaching.
I'm just reflecting back on when I worked for state.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And ma, and I was just a consultant kind of person on public health to local towns, that, that's what I did. But if they had a key position that was coming up to be filled, you know, especially if it was a nursing position or they wanted to create a nursing position in a, in a local town health, I would get called to come and sit on one of these committees, both with, uh, developing the, the process, the job description and with the interview, because there's a broader um, issue, you know, that this, a broader interest, let's say, that the town has, that the state has
Okay.
in how a town is managed.
Sure.
Yeah, I think NHMA would be a good resource to get into that
Right.
world that you're mentioning, yeah, because that's what they exist for.
Training through NHMA um, that.
All the training.
Yeah, maybe not directly the state itself, but they, yes.
Right, that's.
And they direct that at multiple levels, certainly the training that I believe Wendy and I took, we took it separately on different times, would be certainly appropriate to a new town manager. They would, new town manager might not need it if they had been a town manager.
There were others in that course when I went, when I went through it. I don't know if, it wasn't just, it wasn't just select board.
Yeah, it wasn't just select board members.
Right, there are others were there.
My observation, having done a bunch of things within this town, town clerk, zoning board, you know, I mean, there's people think they know what their job is and they don't afford themselves of the opportunities to expand their horizon and therefore leave the town very short sometimes in action and I don't know how to say.
That's a very good point. No, you're right.
Yeah.
You're getting your own little narrow tunnel.
No, I really, I, I wouldn't let stuff like that be optional. I mean, I remember when I went to the training for new town clerks and I found out that the the way every other town and city in the state of New Hampshire does it different
Yeah.
than what Waterville did.
Yeah.
And that I was nothing according to the town, I was nothing but a signature, you know, all the work, all the decisions, all the, everything was done and controlled by somebody who wasn't me, who in fact was legally responsible person. If it came right down to it, you know, it you can get yourself into a, you know, well, we don't need this because we're small or we're unique or we're this or we're that, but it sure is a good thing to look at the broader.
No, you're right, I think we were trying to capture that, uh, in our job ad and certainly we will see what experience the applicants bring to it and we could have a good applicant who may be, uh, uh, short in one area that'd be quite willing to say, hey, this is a really good person. We just got to get him or her trained up in this area and use NHMA is the, is the usual path. The course you went to was probably an NHMA course. I imagine. That was, that was.
There's a, there's a, there's a state law that requires the town clerk to go to an annual meeting, which is essentially an annual training.
Right, like to come and get all the updates on, on town.
And mostly of the motor vehicles, which we don't do.
Right, that, that's, that's the, that's the updates, the yearly updates and state law.
And it's required that they do it by state law, it's required.
Well, I would expect any town manager, he'd be.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to, I think you're a project manager and I think that's
Mm-hmm.
a brilliant idea. I think finding a town manager that can do all the things you talked about that most normal little towns don't and the very extensive experience we need in project management with wastewater and probably solid waste in the not too distant future.
Yeah, no.
Those are two.
Two.
Steel sets that you're not going to get at all.
Right.
Um, so I.
Roads as well.
Not in the same person, that's for sure.
Same person.
Right.
So I think you're the, the board's thoughts of adding a project managers very, very smart.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good, everybody then?
Yeah.
Alright.
Ask the staff what they want?
Their wishlist, their wishlist.
Have you asked them?
Uh, we've, I've talked to them, we've talked to them. I think, uh, the idea of bringing in a department head or maybe two into the process would be the conduit for that
Yeah.
for that, uh, information flow.
The selection, what kind of a person that they, the staff thinks, you know.
Yeah, no, I think we could, we could have a, we could have a larger group.
I mean, it's.
Get everybody at least.
The doers.
No, that's a very good idea. I mean, we could get together with anybody who wants from the staff, whether the department heads or not.
Yeah.
And ask them what they're looking for.
Makes it feel important.
Well, they are.
They are. We wouldn't exist, we wouldn't exist in the middle of the forest, wasn't for them.
They, they're, they're much more supportive of a new person coming in if they've had some
Sure.
say, or someone has.
Yeah, it's a very good idea. We should, we should, we should.
Believe that our intent is to, if you will, inflict the person on everyone. That isn't at all our intent. So in fact, the department has.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Doubtably.[1776.03]
Yeah.